Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, March 3 regular meeting of the Morro Bay Planning Commissioner, Planning Commission here at the Veterans Memorial Building. We will begin our meeting as usual with a moment of silence. Okay, let the record reflect that all Commissioners are present and we do have a quorum and if you will stand and join us now in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now that we know where we all stand, it's time for Planning Commissioner announcements. Are there any announcements that anyone would like to put out to the community today? No, we're a quiet bunch today. Okay, so, well, we can fire things up a little bit with moving on to the election of the Chair and Vice Chair for the coming year. I think we're, I think we're a little overdue for this, so, but hopefully some of our new Commissioners have had a little chance to get familiar with everybody and so it'll be a little more meaningful. Do we have any suggestions or nominations or self-nominations or volunteers?
I'd like to nominate Dr. Teft for Chair.
Oh, thank you.
I, I would also like to nominate Dr. Teft for Chair and Catherine for Vice.
I would like to know if our Chairperson would like to continue.
I would be, I would be happy to continue.
Then I second the nomination for you for Chair.
Well, I'll second both of those nominations.
Okay, so we have only one name for Chairman and only one name for Vice Chairman. Do we need to vote?
You still need to take a voice vote, yes.
Okay.
Can't we just say, "Tag, you're it"?
Yeah, I think you just did.
Most poetic, that's correct.
Okay, so all of those in favor of myself for Chairman, please signify by saying aye.
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 I'll abstain from that. And all of those in favor of Catherine for Vice Chair, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll abstain.
So we have four, four and zero and one on both of those votes.
That's good, thank you.
So then, coming to the consent calendar, we have the approval of minutes from the Planning Commission meeting of January 20th. The minutes are in your packet. Are there any comments or corrections or issues with those? And item A2 on the consent calendar is-
We do actually have to take public comment even though there's not anybody here.
I'm-
We have to take public comment even though there's not anybody here.
I'm sorry, you're absolutely right.
Procedures.
Yes, you're absolutely right.
I did have, I did have one comment. As I read through the comments, it seemed like I was in a bad mood that night about that project that was first. And the only thing I wanted to say is the, it wasn't really a tandem project, it was a triple tandem. And I'm not sure it ever really says that. If you look at the drawings, you'll see it. So I don't want my contact, my comments to be taken out of context. It was a triple tandem and that's why it was so persnickety.
It was.
Yeah. So Scott, can we just finish up the consent calendar then we'll have, oh yeah. So the second item on the consent calendar is the current advanced planning processing list. Does staff have any comments they'd like to make on this?
I don't have any comments, no.
Any comments from the Commission? No. So do I hear a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
None. So consent calendar is approved by unanimous vote. So this is the time for all of you out there in the audience, and you at home probably can't see, but there's no one in the audience, to step forward and give us public comment on any item which is not on tonight's agenda, so please step forward, invisible though you may be. Seeing none, we will move on to public hearings and the first, the first public hearing is one that was also on our calendar last meeting. This is case number UP-0-359 at 725 in Barcadero. And again, we have a recommendation for continuance. Cindy, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Members of the Planning Commission. At the time of the writing of this continuance memo, staff was requesting that the Planning Commission continue this item to the March 17 meeting due to a regrettable error in the public noticing procedures. However, after the staff report was published, staff received comments from Coastal Commission regarding the mitigated negative declaration and that currently require the applicant to make further revisions than what we had originally anticipated. And so they're in the process of meeting the requirements of CEQA, California Environmental Quality Act. Until that is addressed to the satisfaction of Coastal Commission, we are not able to bring this project forward to the Planning Commission for review and adoption of that mitigated negative declaration. Basically, as far as it pertains to biological resources, we have something that is not yet mitigated properly. And so staff is changing its recommendation and recommending that Planning Commission open the public hearing for anyone in the audience who may wish to provide a public comment, but then continue this hearing to a date uncertain or a date to be determined.
So this is not then just a procedural issue, there's some substantive changes that are being made to the project?
Very good.
Well, this, are there any questions from Commissioners?
More of a comment. There's several people in the community that are concerned with the privatization of public lands. And there's also concerns that the interpretation of the LCP by certain staff in the harbor is not an enforceable document and this is something that needs to be addressed within the staff, okay? With harbor and our staff. And the other issue that I see with this is not only with the Coastal Commission, but I think State Lands might take interest in with the docks and the privatization of public lands because it's part of the Tideslands Trust is what my understanding is. So I'm just making a comment to you, maybe you can touch base with somebody at State Lands as well. Thank you.
The docks do require public access. It's a condition of the, of the permits that we issue for those types of docks and would be for this project as it moves forward. Just an answer here.
Okay.
Can we ask even general questions about the project?
We're not really supposed to get into a discussion about it because we don't have a staff report, so it would be real appropriate to talk about it other than maybe it was directed more towards the reason for the continuance.
Okay, well, can we, basically what I'd like to ask is, is the harbor plan and also, or the Embarcadero plan, there's requirements to do harbor side walkways around the, all the properties, basically to create the link from the rock to the state park, hopefully at some point. Is that included in this project or?
Actually, it is not. This is a use permit that's only for waterside activities. There's no land development in this application. Nothing triggered the requirement to improve the, the Embarcadero side of the property, in other words.
Well, it, I'm anticipating a lively discussion when this project does come forward, so we're, we, I will now open the, the issue to public comment. Seeing no one in the audience then, I will close it to public comment and we'll bring it back to the Commission. And any further comments from the Commission, any further discussion at this point?
Really can't.
Okay, so do we have a move to continue case number UP-0-359 to a date uncertain?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So five, zero. Unfinished business, we have none because we're so efficient. New business, however, we have a discussion of slope properties and structures in the right-of-way and I'm not sure who's presenting the staff. Cindy's going to present the staff report on this. Thank you very much.
Oops, excuse me, thank you. So yes, this is a discussion item that staff wished to bring forward to the Planning Commission for discussion and I prepared a few slides regarding this discussion item to get us started. This is a discussion of slope or hillside properties and applicability of the driveway retaining wall requirements as it relates to our fencing, hedge and wall standards that are found in the zoning ordinance under general requirements. So in the staff report, there is some background discussion regarding the typical front yard setbacks, regarding the fencing standards, and then also regarding driveway requirements which allow driveways to be as short as five feet, basically on sloped lots. And I cited the section on page one of the staff report at the bottom of the paragraph. It's a, it's a long, convoluted sentence. So essentially what we have is recently staff has received correspondence from members of the public regarding the requirements as they relate to these sloped properties. And the argument or the assertion is, is that the code as written, our zoning code appears to be primarily written for level lots and they don't take into consideration these steeply sloped lots such as are most notably found in North Morro Bay. The, as written, it would appear that in order to properly construct or design the properties in these locations in North Morro Bay, you would have engineering requirements that would be incongruent with zoning requirements. And so because the current code requirements that we have in our zoning code seem to be a little bit unclear, staff is bringing it forward to the Planning Commission for discussion and consideration of this. And with that, I have a few examples here and these, some of these examples you've seen in your staff report and then there are additional examples that were attachments in your staff report and I believe you will find that at Attachment A. These are some typical examples of retaining wall on an upslope lot where it exceeds the fencing or the wall standards. It's in the front yard setback and likely in the front, excuse me, public right-of-way. The fencing or wall standards are required three feet solid, so it can be a maximum of three feet tall if it's solid or four feet tall if it's 50% open. And here you have, it's slightly terraced back, on the left you see more of a solid wall. Here are some other examples of upslope properties. The one on the left is cut in the middle because I would imagine that there's a walkway there as it goes up to the stairs to the front of the person's house. On the right, it steps back, but again, you have structures that according to a strict interpretation of the zoning ordinance appear to violate the requirements for fencing and wall standards. And then here is the third page and then I'll, I'll switch over to downslope properties. These are much shorter walls, but here you have an area where the picture on the right, this would be public right-of-way right here. It's not as tall as the previous two pictures, but they do serve to further illustrate the wide variety of retaining walls that you would see on upslope lots. And then here are some pictures and it's more noticeable on the downslope properties because you have, essentially you have properties here where in order to develop a property where you could drive straight into your garage, you've created a bridge driveway is what we call it. And then here on the right, from the street, the car would drive straight into the garage, but on the, this would be the north side of the house, you have the sheer wall and then it appears that there is an area that you could crawl underneath there and then an old fence. It's more pronounced here, of course, that's outside of the setback, the area where my red pointer just pointed to. Here's another example of downslope property lots and the steepness of the lot really kind of accentuates the discussion and accentuates the incongruency with the way that our zoning code is written versus standard engineering requirements for properly supporting the driveway. Again, here retaining wall, that would certainly be more than three feet tall in the front setback. Essentially, you have what would amount to a structure in the front yard setback, which we don't allow structures in front setbacks. On the left, you would see, this appears to be even steeper, the driveways here and the structure again. And the last picture, and here you see a car in place, so again, you see the bridge driveway. This driveway's going down a little bit. Again, you have this bridge going across what would be the front setback and then the wall here and then fencing there for safety purposes and then slatted fence here. Now, of course, the slatted fence here meets the requirements because it's not more than four feet tall, but we don't measure from this point here where my red dot is, we would measure from the ground level of the lot. Well, the ground level of the lot is certainly more than three feet down or four feet down. So staff has put, that's the end of the examples. So staff has put together some of these examples and is recommending that for purposes of the Planning Commission meeting as a new business item, that there be discussion about the city's fencing, wall, hedge standards as found in our zoning ordinance and that's section 17.48.100, it's in your staff report. And with direction to staff on how these hillside or sloped properties should be treated as far as are they applicable to these standards. And so as I said, staff recommends the Planning Commission review this information for purposes of discussion and then potentially provide direction to staff to return with an interpretation memo for future adoption. So with that, I'm available to answer any questions.
Are there any questions of staff at this point?
Yeah, Michael.
I should have looked it up, but I didn't, so you can now. My recollection is on the downhill lots, there is a part of the code that talks about access to a garage and that the garage height can actually violate the, the median height requirement that sets up the, the height of the house on a sloped lot. So in effect, if I look at the slope and I cite the house, I'll have elevation one that I can't violate, but then the garage is treated separately because of an assumption, I believe, of slope to go down into the garage. So to me, that's a really key part that's missing here because it actually says because of some of our sloped lots, we will allow someone to elevate a garage separately from the way we cite the house, taking into account the steepness of the slope. So I think that's pretty key because I, some of the examples that I see around town, it looks like the garage is level with the street, which means they may have taken great advantage of that, meaning the garage is set up much higher than it necessarily would have needed to be to accommodate reasonable slope to the garage and drainage. So, so to me, there's a, there's a secondary issue here of when we see these associated with a garage on the downhill, we have to take into account the collateral things in the code about citing the garage itself. So I would say intuitively, that, that's a, that's a pretty big part that's got to be attached to this because these are all ramifications of citing the garage, basically. I mean, every one of these situations that I see isn't so much about the house, it's about the relationship of the driveway, the garage and the slope of the house.
I have not come across that code requirement. That is a new one to me, but as you are continuing your discussion, I will look it up in the zoning ordinance, see if I can find what you're referring to.
I just can't remember where it is. I'm pretty sure it's in there.
Yeah, I remember something about that also where you could cite the garage over the maximum with a 20, 25 foot plus natural, average natural grade, but it was only, but you had, you had to show that that was required because to not exceed, what was it, the 14 or 24% slope of the driveway. But the other thing too is on these garages, most of them are kicked forward to the lot line, so you actually have a fairly short transition on your driveways, so you can't have much of a slope to them because you don't have the, the transition planes to go in there. So they pretty much, if they're kicked forward within 10 feet of your lot line, you pretty much have to be at street grade or else you're not going to get the car in there, it's going to high center on something. So the other thing, I, I thought that part of this code or just the general assumption was that on, on downslope lots, the fencing or the guardrail system, if it was over three feet above grade but still at, you know, from the, above the driveway, it was supposed to be 50% open. And I had been seeing construction of solid stucco guardrail systems on the driveways and I thought, I thought that was, wasn't allowed in the, in the assumptions that we were working under, but different, different interpretations, I guess, have come through for different people.
So this, excuse me for interrupting Commissioner Laura, this assumption that you're talking about that it, that it'd be 50% open, was that just a past interpretation or is that something?
I think it was a past interpretation.
Okay.
That, that was, you know, was generally accepted at, you know, at the time. And I can't tell you where that came from. It was, it was just kind of a nod to the fact that it's, it's a, you know, it's to increase visibility and to, and to decrease the, the impact of it. And so it was usually recommended when, when plans were brought forward, it was usually recommended to do that, but at some point it seemed to have dropped away and I don't know when that, when that was.
I have a question for you. Do you feel that it was three feet above the natural grade that, and it was open, similar to probably the one on the left?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
This is kind of an interesting problem that we have and one that, that if you look at our code, you wouldn't be able to do a lot of these things by the way that it's written, which is why we brought it forward and why we want to get an interpretation memo to bring back to you at some point. You know, the, the railing that you see on the, on the figure on the left, that serves protection purposes, it has to be 42 inches in height.
Right.
And then you see the wall below it is, at the face of the house is probably 10 feet tall. So, you know, we had a lot of those and then when you have, if you had the fence above the garage level or at the driveway level above that, then the thing was solid, that wall would be 14 feet tall or, or, or something along those lines, which, you know, that's a pretty large wall in the, in the setback. And given that we have fence and wall heights, it was unclear, one, to me, I haven't been here that long, is how we've addressed these things. Clearly, we have them all over these deeply sloped lots in town. It's unclear to me how they got there or whether there was any sort of past discussion other than they were dealt with in many different fashions. I mean, even the one on the right there, that's, that's a bridge structure that would not be, if you, if you said, "Hey, Scott, I want to put a deck in my front yard and it's going to be that tall off the ground," I'd be like, "No, you can't." Well, it's in a setback.
Right.
So we're, I mean, we, we had all kinds of things going on here that if you read our code, you wouldn't think you could do. But I would also argue, you want to drive straight into your garage, you don't want to drive down a 15% slope on one of these lots into your garage, you know, with your house on the other, you know, with your living area on the other side of it. That's not a great situation or feeling when you do it or when you try to back out of the slope. So we would encourage you to be able to drive more straight into your garage and have less of a slope. That's, that's a preferred method as opposed to steeply sloping driveways that go in your garage, so.
We had a project that came forward that I remember, I'm not sure if you were on the Commission, and Michael, it was on Juniper. And it dealt with an upslope lot and it was, this, this question came up on the retaining wall because the retaining wall went up from, you know, it started at, at six feet at the, at the edge of right-of-way and went up to, you know, 12 or 14 feet and it, and that was just the grade. So there wasn't any, you know, any other way to do it and still get, get the structure on there because you couldn't put a driveway in otherwise. So, you know, we just kept it so that the, I think the solution was that we kept it to the, the natural grade with the assumption that if somebody built next to it, that then their driveway, they would try to pair the driveways and then be able to take both of those retaining walls down to the driveway level. But the way the code reads now, and we, we dealt with it then, the way the code read is you had to keep the grade at the property line the same as in its natural state. So you couldn't even gang up two of the driveways to make a reduction. So there was, we, we ran into that at that point, so I think that should be a point of consideration too, that we should feed into this.
Just, just a point of order, I think. It seems like we're getting into the discussion and beyond questions for staff, so at least we should open it for a public comment and seeing none, then we'll bring it back to the Commission and we'll continue our discussion. So, so let's just, we'll, I actually have a question if I could, because I, I don't know the answer to this. In most of the cases where we see unusual constructions like this, particularly involving structures in the right-of-way, was an ease, was an easement obtained?
Well, it is standard-
An encroachment permit?
Yeah. Public Works would condition that an encroachment permit be required and, and I believe it's, if it's something permanent, that they, they recorded special encroachment permits before for more permanent-like structures.
But do we know if that's been the pattern in the past or not?
Anecdotally, I know that it's been the pattern, but I, I, I don't know not-
So, and then in that, in that situation, Cindy, let's say that, let's say that the city were to need to widen one of these streets or replace a sewer line running adjacent to one of the streets in the right-of-way or build a sidewalk and that created damage to the driveways and, and, you know, would the city be required to repair that damage or would that not be their city's responsibility?
Well, I can say just having worked alongside Public Works staff and not working in that department per se, my recollection is, is that those agreements have language that say you are putting your structures in the public right-of-way, you are responsible for any damages and at any time that we intend to put in curb, gutter, sidewalk, you will agree to take it out.
Okay.
And so on and so forth, the standard language.
Okay, good. That's reassuring.
I think this is one that takes a lot of discretion because the, these are almost all in my hood, so I know all these houses and, and you know, it's crazy, you could have a wall on one side, even on a downhill slope, you know, this, this person on the right here, it looks like it's about, you know, six or seven feet to the, to the top of the driveway and on the, on the other side, which would be the south side, it's maybe only two or three feet because the hill is also sloping this way in addition to down. So, you know, the, the patterns of the lots are really kind of crazy relative to the street elevation, so I think we have to have a lot of latitude, but, you know, it's always at your own risk that you build inside those rights-of-way. If somebody did have utilities or something that went underneath that material, if they had to be replaced, that person is probably at a great disadvantage for some period of time until the, the work was done and- time, until the, the work was done, and, and I don't know myself who repairs it, but, you know, I think it's, it's always something you take in, into account. The one thing I'd say, that's a little bit more of a concern of mine on the downhill lots, is what I'm seeing in some of the neighborhood is that the assumption is, because the clay layer on top is a little more expansive than the one that's down a little bit lower, I know where, when, when I built on my lot, I think the top layer was five feet we had to go down through, to get to the layer that was more stable. You'll see a, an urbanization of the entire front yard, so you'll actually see the entire front width of the lot paved. And, and I think that's, that's a concern, but it's, it's also a geologic concern. So I'm not sure of the right way to, to play that, because you don't want to build a house like one of these, and then have the yard area on the uphill side of the hill pick up a lot of moisture that goes down through, and then, then your, your house slides down the hill. So there's a natural inclination to want to stop moisture buildup on that slip joint. So, this, this is one of these things that, it's, it's going to be a weird solution because of our, of our specificity that we've got, of all these different conditions that go on. Now, the uphill side's a lot, is, is different to me. The downhill side, I do have a concern a little bit about the steepness of the driveway, because it would be easy to say, oh, I don't want to have to drive downhill. And so all of a sudden, every driveway now is at the absolute maximum, even sloping up away from the street, if there's some part of the code that we haven't seen, and everybody starts building that garage at the absolute highest point allowable. And because of the view issues that we talk about, I think it would be good to have some kind of very clear discussion in the code about, is it up? Is it flat? Is it down? You know, what's reasonable? Because, you know, Commissioner Laura's saying about those transitions, it is hard, I've, I've got an extremely steep driveway, it's very hard for, for some of my life partner to make over that transition sometimes. And, and, you know, I, that's an issue, too, is, is what's, what's the slope? The uphill's a little bit different, because everybody there actually wants the driveway as steep as possible, to build the house as high as possible, look over the driveway of the person downhill, who's built their garage up as high as possible. So, that one's going to be sloping up. So, and at that point, your retaining wall then is going to be solid, and then you have to have something on top of that to keep people from falling into the pit that you've dug for your. So those are going to tend to be a tougher problem in terms of the mass of the wall. You're going to tend to see more eight- or nine-foot sections on some of that, because I think that's just how steep some of the hills are. So I think we have to be really careful. The, the one thing that was mentioned is this idea of, and you saw it on some of the uphill ones that you showed, when that wall is all solid, that's a really, sometimes can be a kind of oppressive, like those two, you know. You know, that one that's unbroken there is, you know, that, that wall's probably 12, 14 feet high. So if you could take three feet off of that, with a different, with a different guard condition, you would, you would greatly decrease the seeming mass of the, the wall. So the one on the right's stepping, and that helps a little bit, too, but I think there's a big difference between the upper part being solid and, and being open. You know, that's the point where I would say there's a lot of discussion to be had about which of those, are either of those appropriate? I mean, I understand why they do it that way. It's, you're building the retaining wall, and you just take the wall up as high as you can. And I'm not saying that those two particular situations are necessarily unattractive, but they can produce an extremely tall wall. So if we wanted to say something about how high is that depth, before we want to make sure that the upper part of the wall changes to a different, you know, rendition, I don't know, that would be up, up for discussion, I think, especially.
Also, I think that if they do some terracing, I mean, if you look at the one on the right, I mean, it might be four to five feet just on the retaining wall, and you could probably terrace that, you know, a little bit, and make it less massive. I don't know, I think if we can encourage terracing, that would be helpful.
You, you see that a lot, where there's room, you can set the walls back and put some distance between them, you can plant between them bricks up the walls, especially when you have the one like on the left there, that's a very tall wall, in the right-of-way. I mean, you would notice that driving by, I think, probably, because it would look fairly odd. So I guess what we're looking to get out of this is, when we have tall walls, do we want to try to step there when we can, to provide space between them, so that we could plant between them, so that we could obscure the walls? And do we want to, when we get to the, the portion where it's no longer a retaining wall, but it's the portion of the wall they're utilizing for protection purposes that's required by the building code, do we want to go to see-through fencing at that point, so we're, you know, lessening the impact of that tall wall, that exposure? Do we want to go down that road and do those things? We can put together interpretation, you know, memos that do that. We can even put together interpretation memos that show what stepped walls look like, you know, that we can hand, that we can hand to somebody, so they can see what we're talking about. So those are things that we can do, if you are on board with us doing them. If you don't like those solutions, though, we'd like to know that, too, because we do, these things are necessary a lot of times, and our, and our code just doesn't address them. It's just like, hey, everything's all good, we all live on flat lots, and we just have regular fence site requirements. Well, that's not the reality we live in here. And we want to solve it, and we don't want to be doing things that we shouldn't be doing, or that are contrary to the code, we want to have an answer for these. This is a, kind of a structural necessity for grading and fitting a house on the site, to have, you're going to have these walls somewhere. And so that's how we would kind of phrase, you know, something we brought back to you is, when retaining walls are necessary to make the site developable, then it's okay. These aren't really the fences that we're talking about in the fence ordinance. These are retaining walls that are necessary to, you know, to develop the site. And so that's the kind of tilt that we were looking at on our side of things, and we wanted to see if, if you saw what we saw, I guess.
See, I, I see the terminology is, is important. The part where it's, it's at grade or below is a retaining wall. The part that's at grade or above is a fence. And I think, I think we should, you know, that's where I would like to see the interpretation go with it. And at, you know, at grade and above, the more, you know, the more open interpretation would help lighten it up, and especially on the downslope lots, would allow for better visual safety backing out of those driveways.
Okay. Let's, let's hear from Richard. Richard hasn't.
I want to follow up on that. I think, I think Commissioner Lucas has mentioned this before, that we have such a diverse community with the different challenges with, you know, like these lots and this downsloping and upsloping lots. So neighborhood compatibility would be something, you got to take a look of what's, what's there. One of the things that I can, I think that you could trigger, is just say, okay, picture yourself in a car, getting out. Now, I think Commissioner Catherine, Catherine said, with the terracing, as you come out, if you could help facilitate, you know, maybe a skateboarder comes by, you want to be able to see him, you know? So that would be helpful. I'm not completely convinced that we need to have, get rid of like a solid wall, or just put fencing above a certain thing. It'll depend, it also depends, you know, on, like, this is on an upsloping lot. On a downsloping lot, having, that's the challenge. The challenge is your height with the garage, and then having a relatively flat pull-out spot. And I think that, just from, from a traffic safety standpoint, that, you know, like pulling out this way onto the street, I think, is uncomfortable. So that, there might be some leniency there. The issue with the geology, a little bit, of these different areas, one of the concerns that I have, and it, I may digress a little bit here, but I'll bring it back, you know? And that's with the drainage. Like, if you have a downsloping lot, generally speaking, on houses with downsloping lot, there is a sewer easement in between the two houses on the two streets, where the downsloping lots have their sewer lines connected there. And addressing that drainage, because that's an I and I issue. So when we have downsloping lots, or downsloping driveways, those that has drainages and the grids, those things all go down, down there. Maybe flat or back a little bit onto the street might help facilitate that, that situation. But it's so case-specific, it'd be hard to put it into words, it might be just something, a consideration. But I like the idea of more of a terrace, and I would just say, put it in the forefront, you're in a car backing out, how would you would make it safe, and then go from there.
I would, I would like to bring it back to the original issue a little bit of the code, okay? Because, to me, it's very clear that 1748-100 was never meant to apply to retaining walls. That whole section of the code is, talks about how you can screen off electrical equipment, and using, you know, and this, and the, the section D that actually talks about heights is, is entitled fences, hedges, and walls. Well, you know, a retaining wall is nothing like a hedge. So I think that we start out with the idea that this section of the code is meant to apply to walls that are installed for screening purposes, and is really not meant to apply to retaining walls, okay?
That's where we want you to go.
The second, the second, the second issue, the second, and this is really, in my opinion, a defect in the code, is it talks about the height that's allowable within front and side, side-streetyard setbacks, or areas, but it doesn't talk about height above what, okay? And here, we have situations where the height on one side is vastly different from the height on the other. So I would like to suggest, sort of along the line of what Jerry was saying, is that we, that we simply say that height, the height, it will be the height above the finished surface that is created by either the filling or the cutting away that occasions the need for a retaining wall, okay? What that means is, that on a downslope lot, you could have, you could have an additional three to four feet on top of the retaining wall, which you really need, because otherwise people are going to fall over it, okay? However, I think, I don't see any difference between these driveways and a, and a raised deck. So I think, I think we should require a 42-inch wall there, which means it's always going to have to be at least 50% open. So, to me, that not only is necessary for safety, okay, to keep someone from falling over it, it also allows someone who's pulling out to, to see what's coming a little bit better than a solid wall would. Now, on it, on an upslope lot, the situation would be different. If you said, if you said you can't build anything above three feet, if you can't build anything more than three to four feet above this finished grade, which would be the driveway, okay, then, then, then that means that when the retaining wall was more than three feet above the surface of the driveway, you couldn't build anything additional on top of it, it would have to be at grade, which, to me, minimizes the aesthetic issues, okay? And generally, if you look at these pictures, every one of, what's on the other side of the retaining wall, in every single case, is planted area or vacant land. In other words, not areas where people are going to be walking around and falling over the top of them. So, to me, if you, those, those two sort of, kind of, I guess, legalistic, or, or, you know, formal interpretations would go a long way towards resolving the ambiguity, and yet, providing a practical solution, that would allow people to, to develop properties.
Okay. So I got a couple of questions for you, then. Moving back to the downslope lots, these examples here, solid walls up to the top, I would think that, once we got to the, the level or the deck for the driveway, we want that to be open, see-through, what have you, fencing along there for the protective purposes that are required by the building code. Leading up to that, it's probably not a retaining wall, it's probably just a structure that's supporting the deck that is the driveway. So, it's a structural component of the driveway that's supporting it, it's probably not a retaining wall, is my guess, they probably excavated out that area, it's probably hollow underneath there, it probably looks a lot like that. You just don't see it, because they filled it all in. You could probably get underneath there, and it's, you know, space that's just not approved. That's normally what they look like. They look like that, right there.
There's, there's, oh, sorry.
I was going to say, the, the one thing about both these examples is, I believe the adjacent lots are empty now. My big concern is what happens when they start filling in the lots, because if everybody's building the driveway to the zero lot line with these things, that's yet another issue, where you're going to have walls and, and things adjacent to each other, and that just may be the way it is. But where you have these open lots next door, then you are seeing more of the impact of this. I mean, I think it's especially, on the, on the previous slide, you know, those are, those are some of the steepest points on, those are really steep lots. I mean, I, I walk my dogs by those, those folks, and, and, you know, it's, it's scary steep on, at that point. And, and I don't know whether they're solid or not, there, there could be cost ramifications of doing it one way versus another as well. I think in general, it's pretty scary to think you're driving on a bridge, or you're parking your car on something made out of wood, fundamentally.
We're designed that way, that's what we see mostly.
Yeah.
We, we, excuse me.
No, that's fine.
You know, there is two ways to build this, you know, you do have, you do, you can set it in, this basically be an internal retaining wall, and fill puddle and tamp, and then pour concrete over the top. One of the, and then there are several of these, these bridge structures that are compacted fill. And the advantage to that is, then you don't have a wooden structure underneath your concrete that usually rots, and you have to repair every 10 or 15 years. So, I would not want to preclude building that way, when somebody would deem that, that that's most appropriate. I'm not as concerned about the structure underneath, because the neighboring, the next house that butts up against it, is probably going to do the same takeoff point for their driveway, or it's going to be similar. What I'm more concerned about is what's above the, above the driveway level. So, so that wouldn't bother me as much as when, as what's extending above the driving plane, so.
Well, that's an easier solve. I was just, the only reason I was pointing this out, making the point about it may not be a retaining wall, is, we spoke specifically, Chair Teft did, about retaining walls. And I was just, my only point was, some of these aren't retaining walls, they're just the structure that's supporting it. So, we would probably be looking to tailor our interpretation to include support structures for those types of things, as well as retaining walls on their side. So, we'd be looking to go down that road and explain those two different scenarios, and then, probably looking to have see-through fencing on top of them, once you got to the deck in this instance, or once you got on the other side of the road, you had the retaining wall, then putting the, when you got to the, when you got to grade, and you needed to put protective fencing in, and that would be open on that side as well. And then we're all okay, you know, calling these something different than our fence height.
Yeah. What's, what's underneath the driveway is not so significant to me, as the fact that the driveway has created a new artificial surface, a new artificial elevation, you know, that then serves as the basis for, you know, in, in both the upslope and the downslope cases.
I don't think the code recogn, well, my interpretation is that the code doesn't recognize the driveway as a plane, as a plane to take the elevations from.
Well, in this, in this case, it just says three feet high, or four feet high, it doesn't say what the reference point is.
That was always assumed as the grade.
Well.
That's what I think.
I guess it doesn't have to be.
There goes, there goes back to a formula that I'm pretty sure is in there somewhere.
We found it.
You found it.
Cindy can read it to you if you want.
Yeah, I found it. Of course, it was buried at the end of a paragraph, and, anyway. So it is at 1748-045, which is Garage Buildings General Requirements, and it says, "For lots located below street grade only, the garage roof portion of the structure may be permitted to extend" permitted to extend 10 feet above the street grade at the garage location unless the height of the residence is allowed to be constructed taller, in which case the garage may be permitted to be constructed to the height of the rest of the residence."
The only detail I'd add is if we're looking at using the driveway as some kind of datum, I would also say, because of some of the slope that may be encountered in the way someone sets up a driveway, we should have a curb height there that makes sure water is, is taken care of properly, because in, in all likelihood, you don't want to be dropping sheets of water off on somebody else's side property. So, you want to be able to control it. So, I'd say we probably need four to eight inches, maybe even a foot, above, above the driveway height at the edges in order, that could be also solid before you get into the open section, something like that.
That makes sense. I mean, I think we'd be looking at something like that anyway, because we don't want that scenario described to happen. And we regularly, you know, pay attention to those types of things when we're looking at drainage on a lot, so that we don't do those things. So, we're not concentrating, you're not allowed to concentrate drainage on adjacent properties. You can't do that. It's against the law.
And that, that curb might be part of the 50% that's allowed to be solid. In other words, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Let me get back to the one, one situation we had over on Juniper, where we actually had opposing lots, and then there was a requirement not to disturb the grade level at the property line. Are you familiar with that? And so.
Not quite sure.
Okay.
I.
It, it came before me, and it puzzled me at the time.
Okay.
Because then it didn't, you know, it didn't allow two lots to get together and remove that whole section, you know? So essentially, what they would be doing, would, they'd be building, both would have to be building retaining walls, and they have two feet in between them, you know? And so it didn't, didn't make any sense at all to me at the time, but that was a requirement that was read into it. That was an interpretation or was one of the rules. So, I think it has to do with not changing the grade of an adjoining at the property line or of an adjoining lot.
You can't change somebody else's grade.
Yeah, that's correct. You can't create, like, you can't create an offset without permission from the adjacent property.
Right. So then, when it's in the right-of-way, then there, you know, can we incorporate something to, to be able to remove that, that grade on an upslope? I'm, I'm thinking kind of at Juniper, where the slope comes down to, right to this, to the curb line.
Once you get into that scenario where you're, where you're off-site, you know, that's going to be dealt with through the encroachment permit process. Because what they look at is, what are, what if any, are going to be our future improvements to the street? And then how is your driveway designed? Because if there wasn't, you know, an intent to expand the street drivable width, say, because we have very wide streets in many areas of town, and a lot of it's, a lot of this unimproved right-of-way that you get out, because we don't improve them to the full width. Or if there's areas where we're putting in sidewalks, or, or, especially if we're going to put in sidewalks, you have to see where that driveway is going to come through, where the sidewalk would normally be, so that you can hit the street. Because you have crowns in the road, you have to take off stuff and do, in fact, you have to work it back, so that when we do put the improvement in the driveway still works. And we make people come up with that design ahead of time sometimes. So, and that is a function of what engineering looks at through that encroachment permit process when you're doing workout in the right-of-way. So, it's already kind of, the only point being, I guess, was a long-winded explanation, that it's something that's looked at, you know, at that time. You know, and it brings in all of those different things as to what might be happening there, to make sure that we're not creating a situation where it's not going to work later for later, for future improvements.
But the, the, the provision about not changing the, the, the surface at the, the elevation at the property line wouldn't prevent two property owners from getting together and removing both of the walls, you know? Because I'd be removing the property, I'd be removing the soil on my side of the wall, and Jerry would be removing the property on his side of the wall, and it could still be done if two people agreed, next-door neighbors agreed to do it.
And we would support something along those lines. I mean, when you come up with, you know, unique solutions that work better, we'd like to encourage that.
Right.
But then this situation was in the right-of-way, so it wasn't a property owner, you know, proposal. So, it was, it was trapped in that, that gray area where it was in the, in the encroachment permit. So, and there, there's another thing that I think we do need to take into account is, on one set of plans I, I put in was, there was a recommendation to leave three feet to, to grade three street, three feet from the, from the curb height. And it was actually an asphalt curb, to allow for, for kind of a, not a sidewalk, but a walking area or an opening area for car doors. Is that still a recommendation?
We regularly look at that for areas where you'd be parking a car up against a curb or an AC curb or berm or something along those lines. We don't want you to put fencing right up to that area. You need to be able to open the car and get out. That's common sense. So, we look at those types of things when those scenarios come forward. People come forward and want to put all kinds of things out in the unimproved right-of-way. Fencing is, is, is one of those things that comes up a lot. In fact, some people don't ask us, and they just go do it, and then we go tap them on the shoulder and say, "Look, we might be able to do this, but you're going to have to get an encroachment agreement." And by the way, you can't have it right at the edge of the curb. So, that is something we look at, as it relates to improvements. If people are doing landscaping and they put our, they put landscape rocks, you know, out on their yard, they'll put it right up against that curb. That's something else that may be moved, because it impedes that ability to, to open a door. So, those are things that, that come up, that our Engineering Public Works Department does look at. And then things we get complaints about, actually.
Obviously, the, the one thing that I know we've talked about briefly before is when we have a situation where somebody's driveway is significantly in the right-of-way, do, do we also want to make discussion as, as part of this about the gated situations? That you, you can't place any kind of gate on your driveway in a, in the public right-of-way? Is that something separate?
I would say it's separate, because it does deal with the right-of-way. I don't know that we typically would approve gates in the right-of-way. I'm not going to speak for the Public Works Department, though, specifically or the city engineer, but I'm trying to think of scenarios where they, you know, they would approve something like that. We have people that have proposed things like that, have come to the front counter and asked to do things like that, and we've denied their requests. So, I don't think it's a practice that the city typically allow. I mean, if you want, I can do a little more research on that. We can ask, can ask Rob, why the, the Public Works Director, City Engineer, how they treat those scenarios, and answer the question back to you later. If you'd like, I could bring it back for the next meeting if you want. It's kind of a curious question, actually, now that you say that.
What is the, what's the height discrepancy that triggers the requirement for a railing? Do you, do you know off the top of your?
Thirty inches.
Thirty inches?
And then there's another one, because from three feet to 42, that I can't remember. That affects residential situations, and it's not residential.
No, all of it, everything's 42.
Yeah, it's all 42 now, though I changed it a few years ago.
So, so theoretically, then, there would be, I, I, the one thing that can, the thing that still concerns me a little bit with all of these situations, and I guess it's unavoidable, I guess it's just life, you know, is people backing out into the street with, not, without adequate sightlines, you know, with, with, you know? So, I mean, at, at least on the downslope situation, there will be some point at which the, the driveway and the slope are less than 30 inches apart, and at that point, whatever this safety railing is, could end and allow a little bit more visibility, you know? On the, on the downs, on the upslope, you're kind of stuck because of soil, but I, and I don't, I don't, you know, I don't have a solution to this. But, but, but anything that we can do to improve that situation, you know, requiring angles at the bottom of the, you know, at the bottom of the retaining wall, or, you know, just, just, I, I, just, I mean, the situation, you know, the situation is just, there is a risk of a kid on a skateboard being, coming, coming along at the time, and if you don't have the old backup radar thing on your car.
Yeah, I, I don't know how much the city in the past has looked at this, but it is something that now, when we get plans in, we require topographic surveys, and I require finish four elevations, and elevations for the driveways and the walls, top and bottom of walls, because if you don't have that, you can't evaluate what the plan shows. And sometimes the, the architect or designer hasn't even looked at it. And so, it is something that we're paying more attention to now, because these are issues that I've seen in the past and that I like to have addressed. And so I like to know exactly how tall those walls are going to be. One, so I can tell you, because most of the ones that are in those scenarios are coming to the planning commission. And, and two, so that we can, so that we can look at site distance issues. I always think that's pretty important. It's why I made the statement earlier about the downslope lots. I like it when you drive straight into your garage. I don't like it when you drive up like this. You have vertical curves at both ends that make it difficult to maneuver the driveway, and then you come up and all of a sudden, you pop out on the street. That's a terrible situation, and probably the worst-case scenario. I don't like them, and I prefer people not to design their driveways and garages that way, which is why I'm, I'm okay with the way these are, you know, allow you to drive back in. I was just, our codes don't really tell you what we're supposed to do with these, and I don't want to just ignore it. And I've seen it, there's, we gave you all a bunch of pictures of different ways they're dealt with, and so that's why we're here. I mean, I really want to, it seems like we got consensus on the idea that we kind of like the open railing on the top of these things, that for most part, these walls are okay. They support the driveway. It's necessary to get you into the house. Upslope, you have the retaining wall portion of it still on top. We'd like to, where you hit grade, we'd like that portion to be see-through as well, to reduce the height of the wall. Maybe stepping walls where they can is a good idea.
Well, no, well, no. On the upslope, what I'm suggesting is that the, the height of the wall, what I'm suggesting is that in cases where you have a retaining wall that's higher than three feet, okay, in that area, there wouldn't be a wall allowed along the top. In other words, it would be, it would be confined to grade level, because, because the, the new surface, the new, the new, the new surface plane is the driveway in both cases, whether it's upslope or downslope.
The building code will require you to have one. In fact, I have to ignore our three-foot requirement, because that doesn't, that doesn't get you there. Building code says it's 42 inches. It's for protective reasons, and you have to have it. I don't have discretion. And we, and it's a good reason, because it's safety, it's a safety concern. People, a lot of those, like the ones that we looked at before, going back over to maybe this one, like, there may be access, if there's access out of the backyard over here, you can walk around to that area, that theoretically, somebody could fall off of it. Or, if this is a scenario, and your wall's up against your property line, and someone from the other lot can walk over there and fall off of it, it requires us to provide the protective fencing. It's only when you, when you don't really have access to those areas, that you don't have to require the, the fencing. If you have clear access, doors that access the areas over here, then you're required to protect it. Or if you have those things that are facing your adjacent lot, you're right at a property line, then you have to protect it. There's other ramifications that come into that, that scenario, but there are requirements from the building code that state you have to do that.
So then, the, what you're saying is that the, on Attachment A, the last page of photographs, which is printed twice, by the way, the one in the upper right-hand corner would be illegal? Or would be not, I won't say illegal, would be not to code? There's a white pickup truck on the right side and a silver minivan, sort of, it's, it's, in the handout, it's right next to the, it would replace, yeah.
Yeah.
Because that's probably at least seven feet on the side, particularly with the driveway, that would say seven feet, by the way, the cactus, with the, with the cactus.
The, the exception there would be if that was an entirely ringed surface that didn't have any sort of access from, that you could walk to it from. I, I've seen these sort of perched areas that people have created on houses before. That's probably because you can't walk up to it from anywhere. You actually have to physically, like, put a ladder over there to get up on it or what have you. Those scenarios, then you wouldn't have to have one. But if that thing, if you can walk, like, from the front door, the side door, the neighbor's property over to it, then yes, you have that protective protection.
Well, and I, I certainly accept what the building code says. I mean, this is just a case where safety trumps aesthetics, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, that's the thing. I don't, some of the things I don't have discretion over. They design something like that. Building makes you, you know, the building code makes you put that there, so. And it's something that we take a look at when you plan checks, so.
Is there any limit on how long the driveway can be? Like, you know, like, there's a five-foot driveway to get in, to the garage, you know what I'm, you know what I'm saying?
What's the setback on the upslope ones that you, that we get? It's the shortest, yeah. So, on the upslope ones, it's as short as five feet. It's allowed when you have those upslope properties. And oftentimes, though, it's, it's five feet, but then there's 15 feet plus of unimproved right-of-way that's out there. So, you don't know that it's at five. You look at it, and then you can still park a car there, you know, in that area, because, because you have all that unimproved right-of-way. It's not part of the improved street, right? And that's, that was that scenario I was explaining earlier, where we have these big, wide, 80-foot rights of way, you know, but the improved street's 40 feet wide. So, you got all this, that goes on both sides. It's unimproved right-of-way, that people do all kinds of things with, and they look like it's part of your lot or your yard.
So, in, in, in your professional opinion, you don't think that's an issue?
I think it allows you to have a driveway that you can drive into. That's why the city put those policies in place, because if you set it back further, you're either doing massive excavations, and that wall, it's 10 feet tall that we saw over there, is now 20.
Yeah.
So, there's reasons why the city did that. And they recognize probably that we have that unimproved right-of-way. We're not widening those streets. You can park a car in front of them. You know, all those things probably went into the development of those policies, because those are the things you look at, like, what happens when you push it back 20 feet? Well, you push it back 20 feet, you have a 15% slope max, that wall gets tall fast. And you're doing a lot more excavation for that, that garage. All the walls around it are a retaining wall, or around the structure, anyway. And so you're doing a lot, you're doing a massive amount of excavation at that point. So, are you kind of, I think we've kind of hit the highlights. I think we have kind of a good idea. Sidney, do you?
You feel like?
I think we probably can bring something back to you that's reflective, but we'll discuss, have another discussion about it, unless there's anything else you want to put forward to, to us now.
I just want to make sure, like, on the one on the right that's up there right now, I, I'm not 100% sure what I'm looking at, but it almost looks as if the, the improved right-of-way is at the face of that wall. So, what we're saying is, in a, with these discussions, that would, that retaining condition would be pushed back another three feet, so that there was some kind of passage along the right-of-way. But we would accept a retaining wall there, and we would accept the walkway going through, because it's not an unattractive solution. It's just you can't get out of your car if you're on, parked on that side. And then that short drive is something that, it's a case-by-case basis as we look at the house lot line relative to the right-of-way.
That's, that's exactly it.
Yeah. I guess my, my biggest concern, and, and I understand there's not much you can do about it sometimes, is when we start doing hardscape across the entire front width of the, of the, of the, of the property. And I understand why the downhill people think they may have to do that, but how you get relief from 50 feet of asphalt, I don't know. But that's, I think, what's possible when we start looking at this.
And there are certainly houses that reflect that out there. Your, your concern is, is based in fact. I mean, those things, those situations, scenarios exist out there in town. You know, the city doesn't have, as you're aware, landscape requirements. So, I mean, that's where you, that's where you get into those types of things, that you're, when you're requiring that, you know, a certain amount of landscaping. You usually have policies where you have landscaping in the front, because that's what everybody sees, you know, for the most part, as opposed to in the rear. And so they're usually, you know, pertaining to what you have out there. You've got to weigh that against the fact we don't have any water, so. I would, it would be interesting to develop landscape standards and, you know, have the water situation that we have right now.
Okay, so, anything further? I, I think we've, taking a shot at it, anyway.
It's a tough one, and it's, it's nice that you are out, actually, kind of, if you want to, it's like, we accept these type of situations, we probably approve here and there, given with the height of the wall and exposed sections that are actually serving them, technically being ordered, that's, I believe, the things he says, but we're just kind of on some, you know, that it's still, that's.
So, let me just ask, before we go on to D2, does anyone need a break? Does anyone, is everyone comfortable, ready to go? Okay. So, D2 is the discussion of the 2015, 2016 City Council adopted goals, which we have received in our packets. city council adopted goals, which we have received in our packets. Would staff like to make any comments on this?
Sure. I mean, I'll go over it briefly. I was going to do a presentation for it, then I kind of changed my mind. I mean, you have them, you can read them. That's what they are. It's been at the public, you know, it's been at a city council meeting and presented in that fashion, I think, four different times. I wanted to provide it to you because it was recently adopted. It was at the last city council meeting and they adopted it as a consent item. And so these are kind of the, you know, you have 10 goals and then you have objectives under each one. And we're not done with this process. We're also going to be associating as the months go on, costs with these things. A little bit of that happened today when you were all sitting here waiting for the meeting to start. We were, that was our first budget session with the council. And they were going through, and you saw them going through the goals to establish, you know, budgetary direction. So we'll continue to do that. As I said, you have 10 goals. And so the first one is to develop the water reclamation facility. That's pretty straightforward. I think that's been a conversation we've been having for quite some time. And then there's the objectives underneath the kind of, you know, measurables and how we're going to get there is kind of how it's described. Second goal, and again, probably not a surprise, improved streets. It's been a long, you know, been a goal of the city for a long time and an ongoing effort and one that we're trying to get creative with and looking at different options to maybe pursue different funding avenues to maybe do a little bit more than we're doing now.
Can I ask a question, Scott?
Yeah.
On the improved street thing, some of our streets are extremely wide. Has there ever been any looking at trying to increase the sidewalk width, you know?
In various areas of town, yes. You know, I mean, we're looking at options for wider sidewalks, potentially in the downtown, in the Embarcadero area. As far as neighborhoods, you've probably heard the same comments that I have. The citizenry seems enamored with the lack of sidewalks in town. And we get people that come to council meetings regularly and say, we don't want sidewalks. We'd like to walk in the street. I'm not saying everybody shares that feeling, but it is one that is fairly pervasive. I've heard it quite a lot since I've got to Morro Bay.
Here's the other thing, and I know Commissioner Lauer and I talked about this in another era. The idea of a pedestrian friendly downtown and the idea of bulbing out the sidewalk at the major intersections, which decreases the amount of exposure a pedestrian has to traffic and also reinforces where the parking zone actually stops. I mean, there's things like that, that, you know, if we did want to see a revival intensification of some of the downtown business, you know, that kind of pedestrian friendly type of intervention in a few places would be something to, I think, to take into account. Because it's hard to be in a place where there's so many visitors and traffic coming through and four way stops and things. And that little extra that you get protection of the curb with the bulb going out there, I think, is something to think about.
It's part of the goals. Actually, we have traffic calming in here. We have, and other things is the improvements to the downtown, to widen sidewalks and that type of thing. That is one of the efforts. So if you widen, if you're widening sidewalks and maybe we're moving parking around downtown, even if we're also looking at angled parking, that reduces the width of the travel lanes that you have. When you narrow that area where cars can drive, they will slow down. You know, sort of creating, what did Rob call it this evening? Friction. I think that's how he referred to it. That's my way to put it. But yeah, I mean, those are all things that are part of the goal set that you have before you and things, the programs that we're looking at, you know, for implementation on. So, and we have the, down that road, we do have the parking management plan that was done back in 2007, 2008. That document is very comprehensive. It has a lot of solutions for things that the city should be looking at, not just related to parking, but, you know, how you allocate it, how you have angled parking, how, you know, it gives you parking counts and then areas where we want to make improvements. It talks about paid parking and options for that, how the city can implement that, to push the parking around where it belongs, kind of maybe have some surface lots that we'd have out there where you direct your signage to, hey, we have parking, it's over here, as opposed to how people just drive around endlessly looking for a space along the Embarcadero. Maybe now you go to the triangle lot that's the portion that we got from Dynegy and you park there and walk. So those are all things that are all part of this and all things that are incorporated into the goals. So that's those types of things will be coming forward.
Has there been any discussion, there's some areas in town where were developed more on a commercial basis and they were kind of transition areas and they've gone more residential, where the street right of ways, I think, are 60 feet and then residential sections are usually 40 feet. Has there been any discussions to revert those properties, those right of ways back to residential right of ways and grant those easements back to the residences?
Well, I've been here for seven months. So, you know, my historic context doesn't go back very far. But that's not something that I've heard anybody speak to. You know, I have a lot of conversations with, you know, property owners and business owners alike. And that's not, that's not something anybody's ever brought up to me. Cindy, does that sound like something familiar that you've ever heard about? So I don't think it's much on our radar. You know, I'm a small sample size, though.
The only thing about things like that is, you know, and all of a sudden people's lots, all of a sudden are larger, their setbacks are different. If a building's replaced, it gets larger, you know, it's another way to potentially drive up some of the valuation issues for tax base. And that's just one comment.
It also, yeah, I mean, right now, in the street that I'm thinking of, there's, the pavement section is residential size, but the actual right of way is considerably larger. And so some of the houses prior to, or some, prior to, you know, GPS surveying and actually been, you know, been put into the, you know, were put into setbacks and stuff. So it's just something I was wondering if it was part of the, it was part of the discussion.
Again, not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Are these goals, oh. Sorry. Are these goals in priority? That's the priority they go in?
Well, you have goal number one. That's the biggest priority of the city council right now. And that is the water reclamation facility, wastewater treatment plant, whatever you want to call it. So to some extent, yes, these are prioritized by the council. And this is where they're directing us to focus our effort. These goals span a period of 18 months, but obviously there are components of it that are going to last much longer. I mean, the wastewater treatment plant, the direction they've given is to have it functioning in five years. That is ambitious and it's going to take every amount of effort that our public works department has to pull off, in my opinion. Not to say it can't be done. It's just going to be, that's an aggressive timeline to make these types of things happen. So some of the things are outside of that, but a lot of these things that we're taking with the idea of implementing within 18 months, or at least having some sort of discussion within that timeframe.
One of the things that I'd like to mention with regards to these goals, the improved streets, I can understand that. But, you know, there was the North Main Street there in North Morro Bay, it's been repaved a couple of times already and it keeps sinking because infrastructure in there is dilapidated, the sewage infrastructure, and it's eroding. So it's kind of a waste of money to keep throwing asphalt on something when you've got your infrastructure eroding. It's just, no common sense. The other thing is, is this is a very nice way of putting improved water supply diversification. State water is going to be a very limited commodity for Morro Bay. That's the reality of it. You know, you just check with the state. And then, in looking at water, one of the things I'm looking at, planning commission, we're going to have LCP general plan. Before we even get to step one, we got to look at, where's the water and what are we going to do with sewage from these, from there? And then we can go forward. It's written here to evaluate Morro and Cho Creek groundwater basin for salts and nutrients and identify strategic improved water quality and annual capacity of water source. That's a, that's a very nice way of saying, nutrients is a very nice saying, that you've got sewage in your groundwater. We have proof of that already. Okay? That rises to me, for me, that rises to a little bit more of an urgent issue. And I've mentioned this before. I think that we need to address this immediately. Okay? And that should be right there with goal number one with the WRF because those things are linked together. The manager treat and the collection infrastructure need, that needs to be addressed. Now, my, if I may, you know, my experience, I was blessed with a lot of good jobs. One of my jobs, when I got out of college, was I got a job at Vandenberg and worked at a national, worked for the National Security Council and built launchpads for them. I built a launchpad there. Previous conversions took three years. We did one in a year and a half and had launched a rocket in a year and a half. And it's not just one person. It's a team that you put around this. I would respectfully disagree with you as far as an aggressive schedule, five years for a WRF. I go, there is no reason why we can't have an operational WRF and the infrastructure fix within three years, period. And I understand the bureaucracy, but this bureaucracy, this political posturing and bureaucracy has been going on since 2003 that I know of. Okay? And since 2007, the, there has been evidence of sewage entering a drinking water aquifer. This needs to be addressed, okay, in a more urgent manner than it is and buried in some gold downstream. It needs to rise to the top that it is. And I, you know, I understand that, you know, the council takes direction, but, you know, to tell the public that, you know, we have that there's sewage all over the state and saying that it's in Sacramento River is disingenuous. We have a point source that we know it's coming from and we need to address it. And I think that, in my opinion, that the WRF and that water supply is linked like this together. Thank you for letting me say that.
Well, basically, these are kind of done deals at this point. So, you know, we're...
I realize that. I think that this is something that's being a little bit cavalier attitude.
No, and I absolutely respect your opinion, Richard. I absolutely do. I just, I'm just pointing out that as a planning commission, our options are, for influencing this at this point are fairly limited.
I will say that the larger infrastructure, you know, program that goes along with the creation of a wastewater treatment plant that's looking to go outside the city limits at this point includes, you know, the collection system and the improvement of the collection system and addressing the issues that Commissioner Sadowski, you know, referenced. So the drinking water thing and the developing diversification of that is one component of the goals. But the, you know, the items that will improve, some of the issues that we have out there will be the infrastructure that goes along with it. And it is part of the capital projects that will go along with the wastewater treatment plant. It's part of the infrastructure. It's been identified for replacement. So all that will get addressed as part of that. So effectively, it's goal one. I mean, that's, I mean, I don't have much to say beyond that. That's more of a discussion that you're going to get in with the public works director and public works advisory board and that type of thing. And probably, probably not something that's going to be really readily addressed by the planning commission. Anyway.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, on goal three, I'd like to, on goal three, item D, neighborhood design, can you elaborate a little bit on what that goal is?
It's the description for the design guidelines, basically.
The design guidelines that we've been working on or?
Yes. It is those and bringing, and continuing to bring those forward.
Okay. And would that possibly include the commercial guidelines that we had sent a letter?
Not immediately. It won't.
But E kind of addresses that, doesn't it?
Yes.
For the downtown?
Yes, it does. And it is something we're going to get...
And you can stretch the downtown to North Morro Bay?
Well, no, I think it's good. I mean, the downtown is somewhere that's a focus right now of the council and is on there. I mean, our downtown specific plan's not adopted. It's a document that was prepared and put on a shelf. So it's something we're going to, I guess, an effort we're going to reinvigorate. And that's going to discuss a component of it. And the existing plan has some design components to it. So we'll certainly be getting into it for that area. And that's at the direction, you know, of the goals and the council. And those are things that we'll be bringing forward to you over time, you know, that you'll be able to take a look at and see. I'm also, one of the things that's not on here, but we are bringing forward, in April, I'll be bringing forward a list of all of the specific plans. And out of that, there's going to be a prioritization by the council of work that we're going to be doing on those. Ones they want us to address and pick up first and take a look at, well, I'm going to be taking a look at it with all of you. So you're going to inform that processes that we're going to be having, you know, basically a planning commission kind of workshop on these types of items, on the different specific plans, based on the prioritization that the council places on those in April. So that's going to lead into this effort as well.
What's the timeframe on the downtown specific plan?
It's good, well, it's going to be one of those ones on the list. And I expect it to be probably the first one on the list. And then, you know, the other ones will fall in place where they fall in place and we'll bring you those forward. But that, there's a focus right now on the downtown, Embarcadero, there's the, one of the goals talks about the connection of the two, right? So those things all play in together. And it's sort of the economic efforts that the city's going through with LEAP right now, has all her business owners involved. And they just, we're all, you know, momentum that's kind of been generated by LEAP and the whole economic development effort that the city's putting forward. And if you look at the goals, you'll see other economic development opportunities in here that are pushing that forward on into the future, but potentially with the strategic plan and things like that.
And one of the things I'd like to suggest, as part of that process, maybe look to see where plans can be, where it makes sense to combine. We've got some plans now that seem to have arisen, some specific plans that seem to have arisen on a very much ad hoc basis to address some specific issue. And maybe those could be combined with other plans to make more sense.
Yeah, some of them don't have a lot of specificity in them either. You know, so you, they, you call them a specific plan, but I would say that they're a specific plan in name only. They don't do many things that are very specific, which is kind of odd. But those are conversations that we'll have as we get down this road a little bit more.
And the other thing I would, other comment I'd like to make is that in terms of the traffic management plan, I have, I have a strong bias that that needs to be folded in very much with neighborhood design and downtown specific plans so that, so that rather than sort of having an overarching document that says, this is what we do in Morro Bay, I think it would be much better to say, this is what we want the streetscape to look like downtown. This is what we want the streetscape to look like in our residential areas. This is what we want the streetscape to look like in North Morro Bay, et cetera.
Those are typically, you know, components that you find in specific plans from that standpoint. Traffic management plan is kind of an overarching, you know, document. We have grant funding out right now, grant funding application out to Caltrans to look at the, you know, a multimodal approach to the city's traffic. And that's going, and if we're fortunate enough to maybe receive that grant, that's going to feed into the general plan update effort, which has a large traffic component to it. Circulation's a huge, huge deal and it's driven by land use. And it's a, it's a large component of the general plan, LCP update. So we're hopeful that we get on that road. Otherwise, we have a rather significant funding shortfall that we'll have to get creative with.
Scott, there was a presentation to us from Caltrans at one point back in the Dark Ages about replacing and upgrading the Caltrans fence at North Morro Bay. Has that surfaced or has that ever, has that come back on the radar now that we're, this state is out of the dire straits it's in?
I don't know that that's anything anybody's ever brought up with me. So I'd have to go, I'm going to have to go talk to Rob and see... go, I'm going to have to go talk to Rob and see where that went, if anywhere.
It would be nice to get rid of that chain link.
Okay. I mean, a couple of the highlights I'm going to point off, if you don't mind, as I look at the goals again. Under goal four, we have potential, looking at the hiring of a code enforcement officer. That's something that's kind of interesting, and will probably live in community developments if we go down that road. Be looking at costs associated with that for a part-time basis, a full-time basis and whatnot, so we can bring that forward to the council. I guess it's something that we've had in the past, and then there's been significant interest over the last few years, and so that's something, that's an interest that continues, and so we might have opportunity for something along those lines. And so that's kind of something that's new and sort of helps support our land use documents. Most of the components that we get in relate to, you know, zoning-related issues. So that might be something that was of interest to the Planning Commission. Already touched on economic development. In goal seven's where you find the, you know, the widening of the Embarcadero, the promenade on the ocean side, the link between downtown and the Embarcadero is also there. And then implementation of the Parking Management Plan, that's something that I would think that, you know, as we go along and move down that road, those are some things we'd probably be showing, depending on what we decide to do, we'll be showing the Planning Commission. In that, in that goal, there's also, the city's done this several times, but looking at signage, both street signs and wayfinding signage, and coming up with significant, you know, improvements maybe to the sign, especially wayfinding and consistency. We don't really have consistency out there. And met with a group of downtown folks today, or this, this morning with the city manager, and a couple of the council members, Jamie and Christine. And that was one of the things identified is not all of our wayfinding signage that's in town, all of it tells you where the beach is, but not all of it tells you where downtown is. Some of them do, some of them don't, and they, some of the business owners took offense to that, and rightfully so. Our wayfinding signage should probably tell you where our downtown is and where the Embarcadero is, and note that they're separate places. I thought that was a, a good point that came out of the meeting that we had.
It might also be worth considering some signs that tell people where the, like the Albertson Center and the center next to it are. The one question, I walk on the Embarcadero a lot, and one question I hear a lot from people that are out of town is, where's the grocery store?
Yeah, that's true. I've, we've had people walk into City Hall and ask us that since I've been there. And like, that's, that's not great. So yeah, wayfinding signage that puts you to some of the other commercial areas is probably a good idea. So that's one of the things, anyway, that we'll be looking at, too. And I think, you know, improving those types of things is, is good for, you know, good for, certainly good for folks that are visiting the city. So that's about all I had on the, on the, on the goals. I just, I wanted to bring them forward because the city council goals are staff's goals and the Planning Commission's goals as well. And so we kind of take a look at what we'll be looking at for the next 18 months is probably a good idea.
Please, please communicate to the council that the Planning Commission is more than ready to work on supporting their goals.
Absolutely.
Okay. So this is the time for general comments from any of the planning commissioners that would like to bring up possible future things. We may have a relatively full plate here for the next, next 18 months.
Scott, I was wondering, we did a lot of work on the design guidelines, and do you have a timetable when you'd be bringing that document back?
I would have thought that I would have been done with it by now, but the reorganization has taken a lot of my time, and now we're reorganized, we're kind of, well, we did it. There's still all the behind-the-scenes things that happened with that, including budget, which we're in right now, and we got the preliminary budget documents. And you might imagine mine had all zeros because I wasn't a department before, so that makes things interesting. So I'm kind of recreating the wheel here, or creating the wheel, whatever, however you want to call it. So I'm going to have to finish with that before I get back to it. So it's going to be a couple of meetings. And then I do see about a month or so down the road, a window where I'm going to probably be able to hit it. I thought, again, I'd be done with it by now. I think I've told you I'd be done with it, and I haven't had a chance to really even pick it up since I did, you know, maybe a month or, last time I looked at it, it was probably about a month and a half ago, month? Yeah. And I just, I haven't had the time. Got so much stuff going on right now. It's, it's all I can do to keep on top of it, to be honest. But it is, that is the intent. You know, I think I kind of was looking at my schedule the other day, and I see kind of a window in about a month that I'll be able to pick it back up and bring it forward. So that's what I would say.
I have one, just one comment. At the last city council meeting, the Morro Bay staff had brought to the council a proposal for a memorandum of understanding between the city of Morro Bay and the Cayuga Sanitary District on the WRF. And I think it's very important that we follow a process. And I feel that before bringing it up to city council, I think that the staff should have brought it up to WRFCAC first and let them look at it. We have a very good citizen advisory committee on that, very knowledgeable people. And I think that it would behoove us to run that through before any kind of proposal like that for, you know, even for modified and having a, asking the city council to approve it was a little premature. And in my opinion, I think these kind of things should go to the Public Works Advisory and the Planning Commission as well. But, you know, at least the WRFCAC, that's what it's there for. So that's all I want to say about that.
Anyone else? Okay. And Scott, so we have a time to decide for you to make any further remarks, or?
Yeah, I have a couple, I have a couple. A reminder that on March 24th, we have the Joint Planning Commission and City Council meeting at 4:30, and that's going to be to review the plan for the plan. I've had it for a while. We haven't brought it forward because we, we're working on the grant agreements for the LCP update and the sea level rise. And we have the plan for the plan came back, and I had them give me a timeframe. And the timeframes for a general plan LCP update are, did not mesh or jive with the limitations that were in the grant agreement for the LCP update. And so I had to have conversations with Coastal about, look, we have a comprehensive effort that we're undertaking. What is my leeway when we get to the end of it? Because I'm probably not going to have an LCP update for you at the end of the grant agreement timeframe. What does that mean? Is there going to be extensions, you know, if we've made progress to a point but we're not done? And they don't like to tell you, you know, for grant programs, they don't like to tell you that there's going to be an extension opportunity later. But I think they saw that we had a comprehensive effort that we were undertaking, and they said, yeah, it looks like, you know, if you're not quite done, then we, then you'll have an opportunity to, to apply for an extension. And we just got word on that a couple of days ago, I mean, a week ago, about. So we're able to bring that forward now, the plan for the plan. And all the timelines in there are going to be okay with our, as the grant, we're still not done with the grant agreements, but we're almost there. It's going to, they're going to work together, so we're, we're on a little more solid ground. That's why I was kind of holding off to get those answers. And so you're also going to see, you know, a discussion, we're going to have that meeting about the, the funding and the shortfalls, and what are we going to do with those. That'll be an interesting conversation and one that I'll be curious to see, you know, what the council has to say about that. Because we do have funding shortfalls, you know, we have an estimate about what it would cost on the high end and the low end. And we have some grant funding money, we have a little bit of general plan maintenance fee money. That's what we have. And then we have one outstanding grant application, and we're looking to apply for a couple of others. And we have about a three-year process for the general plan and LCP update, where we could potentially, you know, pursue other grant funding opportunities, which we will do and are in the process of doing. But bringing it all together is going to be kind of interesting and to see how we frame that. But hopefully, the goal out of presenting it to everyone and bringing that information out is to kind of get direction to move forward and go out with the RFP to start the process. So with any luck, we'll get good direction. And then in the not-too-distant future, that RFP will be going out for the, for the update process, and we'll be entered viewing consultants and kicking this off. So that's, that's where this is all intended to go, if you want to look down the road a little ways. And I had...
Is the meeting here in this building?
Yes, it is. Yes. So it's a special meeting of the city council because it's before the city council meeting starts. And then another reminder, we do have the, several of, you are going to the Planning Commissioners Academy down in Newport, leaving tomorrow, I assume, probably not tonight. And I want to remind, Richard, that we need to get you that packet, which I forgot to bring with me this evening. So I'll have to go back and go get that. That's about all I had. I don't have anything else to announce.
Well, unless there are other things on people's minds, we will stand adjourned until the next regular Planning Commission meeting, which will be here at the Veterans Building on March 17th, 2015. Thank you.